He's right there next to Jeff, so keep him in line. And the first item on the agenda is a discussion, approval or disapproval of the canvas of the election results for the September 23, 2025 Congressional District Seven Special General Election Dana Lewis.
Good morning Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, Members of the Board, Dana Lewis, Panal County Recorder. We will be doing the presentation for the Panal County Congressional District Seven Special General Election. Hopefully you've all had time to actually review the canvas in itself. For ease of access for the public, we put the presentation together to go over what we call the hotspots and then also offer some additional feedback. These are the required documents that are needed to be in any of our election canvases, of course, the summary reports, precinct result report, statement of votes cast, provisional ballot report, early voting and accessibility report having to do with ADA, poll worker training report, and the voter education report. The special general election summary results report shows that we had for this election 3,954 active registrants with a turnout of 19.02%. This breaks that information down by the different precincts. Again, CD seven was only applicable to four precincts in Panal County, 38, 53, 67, and 91. It shows the registered voters by precinct and the ballots cast per precinct. This is information for the public. We have been tracking voter turnout by percentage going back to August of 2016. There are some interesting items for general population knowledge we like to point out. You'll notice in November of 16, November of 20, and August of 2024, those are presidential elections and general elections, and those all show that we're at that, you know, high 60s to mid 70s rate of voter turnout. You'll see that in November, sorry, apologies, August of the same years, or sorry, even years, 18, 22, those are our midterms, and midterms typically are around 50% turnout. What's really interesting about 2025 is these were all special elections. These weren't normal elections. I can't say normal, they're all elections are normal, but these were jurisdictional or special because of the death of Congressman Grahava. So July was that primary. We saw a 13% turnout there. August of 2025 was the special election for the jurisdiction incorporation for Santan Valley. That turnout was at 27%, and then the general election for CD seven is at that 19%. This is just showing the same information but with actual numbers of voter turnout instead of percentages. We're required to report this information during primaries. This shows the partisanship of voter turnout, again, required during a primary, but this is one of the most commonly asked questions of our department after a canvas. So you'll see for turnout of the about 4,000 voters, 50% of them turned out were Republican, 27 Dem, and the 21% were PND, independent, or other. The next graph shows that we had of the turnout of the 3,954 bi-party, 25% in the Republican Party turned out and 23% of the Democratic Party turned out. We will continue to bring this information to voters with today's climate in elections and having to really want to explain to our voters where the turnout is. So you'll see here that we had 73.9, almost 74% of our voters turn out in early voting, whether that be early by mail or early in person, that's early. 14% is Election Day. That 12% is a late early, but that is also encompassing in that early. As we talk about going into large turnout elections like primaries and generals, it's very important for us to continue to inform and communicate to voters that the late earlys, we want that number to be as small as possible. As required by law, we must show statistics and numbers from our systems. We learned a really long time ago, it's never good to have one single program tracking numbers. So we created resiliencies in our processes. And so the first that you see up in the upper right-hand corner, that is a report that is garnered out of the Avid system showing the precincts and the different early ballots blocks. Then we also take that information and in two different spreadsheets, we'll also track the rejects and how they were rejected. The rejects will usually be the UPS, United States Postal Service, undeliverable or temporary away. Again, 2025 was a different year. This is normally just jurisdictional small elections. We did have the congressional elections, of course, in Santan Valley, but these numbers are always the highest for our rejections. Signatures not verified, that means a non-matching signature where we're trying to get in touch with those voters to cure that ballot, or missing signatures. Again, those percentages are very low and that's a really great thing. For this election, we only had one provisional ballot. This is winning, folks. This is what voter education and outreach looks like. We continue to be precinct-based in Panal County, and we do an enormous amount of communication to the public, letting them know that they must report to their designated voting, precinct-based voting location. So we did have one person show up, and they were out of district, which means they saw the sign, they showed up to vote, and we said, well, yes, you might live in this area, but you're not able or eligible to vote in this. We're never going to tell somebody that they can't vote, however, that ballot is not going to count. I love tracking provisional ballots because when people push back about precinct-based voting, I think it's really interesting for us to be able to show where we've had problems in the past with it, how much we've done, so was the juice worth the squeeze when it comes to voter education and outreach, and how drastically we've been able to reduce that number of provisional ballots. Again, Panal County, winning. And this is another place Panal County is winning. So we send out to our polling locations a certain amount of ballots. You see for each one of the precincts, the numbers there. We then know to push that against how many people actually checked in and cast a ballot at the voting location, and then how many ballots came back. Education, communication, outreach, and poll worker training matters. This shows that poll workers are listening and they understand that one person, one ballot, unless they spoil one, and then we're accommodating for that and making sure that we're auditing that process. Again, there were no discrepancies during this election. Voter education and outreach between social media, public service announcements, our different voter education outreach tours, the voter education working group meetings, the reports that I come to the podium and give to the public and to the board of supervisors, this is how those numbers go down. Social media is a great way to reach all of Panal County. We don't have a just Panal County radio station or news station, and so sometimes when the jurisdictions around us are having elections, the voters will hear that. We're utilizing and capitalizing on social media to make sure that we're getting the message out on how Panal County voters vote. Special thanks to Taylor &amp; James in the Communications Department, Lisa and Kim and Martha and Mark, they put in the hard work that makes you guys look good. Here, 34 events over the last few months, and of those 34 events, 2,385 attendees. That means we had interaction on average with 70 people per event. We're talking about precinct-based voting, what it is to sign up to be on the active early voting list, what it means to vote out of precinct, what's going on with the elections procedures manuals, different laws and legislation that are changing. We are keeping Panal County voters informed. Again, the poll worker training report, those audits, why they come back clean is because we're doing a better job than ever to train our poll workers, shows how many inspectors, marshals, judges, clerks were at each one of our voting locations for the CD seven election. Also, love seeing that we have students that are involved and having ambassadors at our voting locations. Shows how many people were trained and the different tech that we have at each of the locations. We have learning modules that they learn about the behind-the-scenes, about Help America Vote Act, the National Voter Registration Act, the laws that go into place. And then we have a couple of virtual sessions that we do right before the election because this election was so similar to the primary, so we just did some virtuals with them. Troubleshooters and runners make it go on Election Day. Thank you to Public Works Facilities for stepping up and the Panal County Elections Department who go out there and meet the voters where they are. We did a refresher training with the troubleshooters from Public Works and Facilities. They do their different routes. We have the three box trucks that we're able to utilize, and then of course, public work vehicles. This is different from the CD seven primary election. We had to flip the route around because precinct 67 had something going on at that public work yard, so we, to accommodate that, ensured we flipped our route around, and we're still able to get everything delivered in time. Without the community of Panal County, this does not go off the way that it has for the last two years. It's absolutely encouraging to be part of such an amazing team. Between the Office of Emergency Management, Information Technology, Fleet, Public Works, Facilities, our Sheriff's Office, the County Attorney's Office, Communications, County Management, they're all part of our bimonthly preparation meetings that we start when we're going into election mode. Because the last few meetings, last few elections were smaller, we were able to do our command center for most of those team members virtually, so they just check in with us every two hours. We let them know what's going on, if there's any issues, if there is anything that needed to be taken care of, thank God there was not. The other thing we started doing this last year is we send out stakeholder reports every few hours. This is to members of the public, the party chairs, to reporters, and let them know how well it's going. This way, we've already created that relationship, so in the event something is going on, we can be ahead of it and be communicating with those stakeholders. Again, emergency preparedness and planning and our threat liaison officers are two of the departments, and between Ms. Redden and Sergeant Valdez, they keep us safe, they keep us secure. Communications, again, without them, we would not be as informed in our communities as we are. ASU did something new and had one of their fellows in our spaces these last couple elections, and so they are trying to make sure we're engaging the youth. We're really excited about that. And then our party chairs between logic and accuracy, the hand count audit, and political observers are engaged and, you know, are very responsive to our emails and calls when we need assistance. This is Aman. Aman is the ASU fellow that worked with us through the last elections. The response from her professor in regards to us allowing her to be in our spaces in the command center, actually watching us on Election Day. They're trying to create programs to engage people in the election processes. This is something across this nation that has never been thought of in the past. And so the fact that Panal County is assisting with spearheading such an amazing program, another shout-out to Yasmin Alvarado. She is an election specialist in the Elections Department. She helped mentor Aman. She is an ASU alum. She's helped polish almost every program that we have in the Elections Department, and this is where we're going, folks. We're embracing our youth and making sure that they get their hands in the processes. The next is Monique Carter. She is our early voting supervisor. When we talk about those numbers, we have 300,000 registrants over in Panal County. Over 200,000 of those get ballot by mail. That's because of the work that Monique Carter does and what she does to advise her team and supervise that process. And she knows that we need people that are young and engaged. She worked with the Human Resource Department, and we had interns during the summer program, these are two of them. So everything that you see that goes on in the fishbowl on the right-hand side, to include the map that she created behind her, that's because of Mo Carter. But it's never done, and you guys know that. So payroll, logic and accuracy testing, post zero reports, records retentions, the excess counter ballot disposition, review of equipment resources, and then accomplishing the reorder, the post-election hot wash, I can say, those are all done. The update of standard operating procedures, thank you once again, Yasmin, she's already taken notes and already getting in line to document any changes that we needed to implement and getting ready for legislation going into January. Delivery of the canvas reports, the Arizona Secretary of State's office will occur from the Elections Department with this SOS tomorrow, and then already working with Gina in the Comms Department to clean up our website, because after we've put one election to bed, we're already working on the next one, folks. Any questions, gentlemen?
Just say, "Great job." Thank you.
Yeah. A lot of information there.
They can go back to it.
Supervisor Goodman, do you have any questions?
Bless you.
Do we have grass growing?
No, I'm good. I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right. Picture, is that grass growing over there at the building?
It is.
If there's no other questions, Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the canvas of the election results for the September 23, 2025 Congressional District Number Seven Special General Election.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Aye.
We'll take...
Thank you, Dana.
We'll take that as an aye.
Thank you, Board.
That is an aye.
Everyone else has left the call.
She's not sticking around. All right. All right, everyone. This second item is a presentation from the County Supervisors Association, and you hear me brag on this organization quite often, and I, today will demonstrate some of the work that they do that is very beneficial to all of us as we have to make decisions. You know, Craig Sullivan kind of sat back a couple of years ago, I want to say a year and a half ago, realized he had so much data but not organized, and he gave Vanessa the charge to put this together, and she's created this dashboard that you can go to and look up just about any kind of information that touches communities, particularly counties, county services, county income expenditures, and it's, I think it's a very, very useful tool. We can use it to even help explain to our constituents from time to time when they challenge what we're doing, and they can see kind of the dollars and cents that we spend on. So I don't believe Craig is with us, but I know Vanessa is, and she's going to do this presentation. I can't thank her and CSA enough to take the time to give us this presentation, but I think it's very valuable to county governance to have a tool like this. So with that, Vanessa, are you ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you, and good morning, Supervisors. That was a great introduction and overview. On the screen right now, I've kind of got a document to give you a sense of all of the different tools that Supervisor Miller was speaking to. We have over 12 million data points in our database at this point that we deploy in a number of different tools, and really, all of this information is just accessing publicly-available documents that are published by state agencies or by the county themselves, but turning that information into insights that can be easily accessed is really our objective here, so that you all have good information and that state lawmakers, when they're considering policies that impact counties, have good information to understand the implications and various trends across counties. So I'm going to walk you through three of the tools that we have available, because I think they're probably the most useful to you. I'll start with our county profiles, talk about our county encyclopedia, and then finish with the county revenue dashboards that are accessible on our website. I should say at the outset, our website is getting a pretty substantial makeover at this point. We anticipate being done and having that ready for consumption after our summit at the end of this month, but you'll be able to access all of these tools in the same manner that I'm going to walk through today, or you're just going to countysupervisors.org-data, and it's going to take you to a page where you're able to click on any one of the tools that we have, and it'll open and launch. So if we go into our county profiles, what we wanted to do, as the Chair indicated, we have lots of different data, and I think it can be overwhelming to go into our encyclopedia, which has, you know, tens and tens and of pages, and I think hundreds of visualizations at this point, to find just a single data point. So what we tried to do with the profiles was pick the information that's most frequently requested about county revenues and county cost drivers and centralize it into a single tool, and that's what these profiles are. So when you land on the page, you'll be able to select a county. I've already pre-selected Panal, and then when you go to the county revenue section, it's going to pull up a lot of different information, kind of as a snapshot for the most recent fiscal year available. And so because this is pulling from several different sources, the most recent data we have for every one of those is fiscal year 2024. Just going to zoom in here a little bit for you so you can see this a little bit more So we've got fiscal year 2024, and it's really aimed to give folks a sense of what's your general fund revenue amounts look like, where do you get your revenues from, and then really, how does the county compare to the other counties across the state? And you can see that in general, Panal is slightly more reliant on the property tax than other counties are, and that generally has to do with the mix of sales taxes and vehicle license taxes that the county gets to fund general government services. We also have the kind of economic makeup of the county on here expressed as your property tax base. So who are the payers into the property tax system in Panal County? And then it maps it also against the statewide total. So you all have kind of less general commercial property as a share of your tax base than the state does, and more of your tax base coming from residential property than the statewide property tax base. Similarly, you can see it on the sales tax side, so this is all the different transactions that go into the state shared TPT that the county receives, but also the local sales taxes that the county levies. And you all have a smaller portion of your tax base that comes from general retail activity and more, at least in fiscal year 2024, that came from contracting activity, which makes sense with all the economic development that's happening in the region. Additionally, we've got all of the county-wide special districts that are levied in each one of the counties, but then specifically for Panal, we've got the different county-wide or county-controlled special districts and the rates that were adopted in fiscal year 2024, along with the different transportation funding sources that you either receive from the highway user revenue fund, or in your case, from the local sales tax that's levied and collected. And then importantly, at the bottom here, we have the limitation that's on your property tax, the constitutional levy limit, and how your fiscal year 2024 levy compares to that limitation, and then how that's trended over time. You can see that Panal County is kind of on the lower end in terms of other counties in how much of your levy limit you actually levy on an annual basis. The last thing I'll mention on these profiles is that the back page has information on your most recently available audited expenditures and demographic data. So it's going to highlight your unincorporated population, how your total population is trending over time, and give you a good snapshot or way to say what you all know kind of intrinsically, but I think folks outside of the county might not realize, which is prior to the incorporation of Santan Valley, you had just a massive portion of your population living in unincorporated county compared to the statewide total population in unincorporated areas, only being about 20% compared to the counties, almost 50%. And then at the bottom here, we've got your audited expenditures broken out by general fund spending and total fund spending in various buckets. In general, this capital outlay box isn't as large, and so we do give folks the ability to kind of hover over and see how these are trending over time. I think you all had a large plan purchase in fiscal year 2023 that's in this capital outlay bucket, but this gives folks the ability to just kind of at a snapshot, see what counties are spending money on, and then see how much of your constitutional spending limit the county spends on an annual basis. And so that, again, is your most recently available expenditure limit report, just visualize kind of in an easy-to-comprehend manner. So before I move to the county encyclopedia and go a little bit deeper into some of these data points, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to pause here and ask if there are any questions on the profile.
Any questions at this time? Okay.
Chairman, if I may, just for the record, Supervisor Goodman is on the call.
Oh, he got back on?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
You need to unlock your iPhone first.
Proceed, Vanessa.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the encyclopedia is kind of our behemoth tool, where if you're really looking to understand trends over time, to compare across counties, this is the tool that's going to allow you to do that in a number of different ways. Because it has so much data, we break it out into four different sections. So you've got kind of general information, which will give you a sense of the elected officials in the county, the number of judicial positions and officers, the tribal communities in each county. The revenue section goes through all of the major general fund revenues and also special revenues that counties receive. Expenditures is somewhat self-explanatory, but also includes tracking of major state mandates that counties have to fulfill, like payments to the long-term care system or the pension system. And then we've got a section on demographics that has information that we pull both from the state demographer's office and from the Census Bureau. So just to give you a sense of how these pages are organized, I've pulled up the revenue section of the encyclopedia, and each one of these sections has a landing page that will give you buttons to all of the main pages in this section of the encyclopedia, but it'll also show you kind of the highest level of data that's included, to give you kind of a flavor of what's in there. And so if we zoom in a little on this page, the revenue section is going to give you a sense of the general fund revenue sources that counties receive, and this was on the profile specifically for a single county, and the example I showed was Panal. This gives you a sense of how all of the other counties compare in fiscal year 2025, and that it also kind of at a snapshot shows the relative growth from last year to the most recent year in all of those revenues combined. The way you navigate the encyclopedia is using these buttons up here at the top, so these dots will give you the ability to open up all of the different pages of the encyclopedia. And so we'll just go to this major revenues page, so I can show you a couple of different ways that you can look at this. I think most frequently, when we're talking to state policymakers, we have to kind of explain over and over again that counties are really creatures of the property tax when it comes to revenues, and something that we found during the recession, kind of on a statewide basis, was that when state shared resources or local excise taxes contracted as a result of kind of the economic downturn during the recession, the reliance on property tax had to increase. You all have had a really different experience in Panal because of your, you know, dramatic population increase and economic development that's happening. And so in this chart on the top, we're showing just your breakdown of revenues over the last 25 years, and you all have become actually less reliant on the property tax as you've seen increases in your local excise taxes and your state shared TPT, and the board has taken action to modify your levy. Additionally, because the state can drive so many of the county's costs with its policies, we've also got kind of a metric to give you a quick sense of how your revenue growth compares against the state general fund and also compares against other counties by revenue stream. and also compares against other counties by revenue stream. And the nice thing about the encyclopedia is that it's really customizable. So let's say you didn't really care about the early 2000s because the context in the county was so different. You can just toggle these filters to limit how much data is displayed on these tables. And you can also say, let's, instead of just a single year of revenue growth, you wanted to see how much your revenue had grown over the last five years. And so you looked, you can change this base year for all of these calculations. So instead of 2024, I set it to 2021. And now all of these numbers have been updated to reflect the total change over that time period instead of just a single year. So these filters can really give you a lot of ability to customize the information that you're looking at. Quickly, in the expenditures section of the encyclopedia, this is really helpful when we're thinking about costs that can drive county budgets without, you know, local input on what those costs should be. So a good example of that are the payments that the county has to make to the state's long-term care and Medicaid systems. And so this page gives you a sense of how all of the total county contributions have changed since the mid-2000s up until 2026, the most recent budget that was enacted by the state. But it also gives you the ability just to, very quickly, by clicking on Pinal County, to filter those charts, you see the variability that the counties had to try to manage in these state mandates over the past decade or so, with fairly substantial increases in the contribution overall, but kind of a jittering effect of an increase one year, a decrease the next year, or really large increase one year. And so it can give you kind of the tools or the data to communicate the experience that the county is having, whether it's volatility in these mandated payments or you're looking to communicate the effect of the county's actions to pay down your pension unfunded liability, which is also data that we have in the encyclopedia. So if we go to the individual pension plans, and I think I've got this already set for Pinal County, but if you want to look at a different county's pension status, you can just go up into the filters and select a different county. But you can see the contribution rates that the county has had to pay into the public safety system and into the corrections officer system over the past 20 or 25 years, and how the county's action to kind of refinance your unfunded liability through bonding really reduced your contribution requirements into that system and made it much more affordable. The only caveat here is obviously this doesn't include the bonding payments that you all have to make on the debt that you took out in pension obligation bonds. And then the last thing I'll highlight about the encyclopedia before looking at the revenue dashboards is the demographics section. I think this one is particularly interesting for you all in Pinal, just given your substantial growth in population. And I think this chart, which shows you the change in population in each county over the last decade, really shows the different experience that you all have had. Your line goes pretty straight up while the other counties, or some counties have declining population or just gradually growing population. And so this can give you a way to show folks just how different an experience you all have had compared to the other 15 counties in the state, or the other 14 counties in the state. Additionally, you're able to go a little bit deeper into this data and break out your incorporated and unincorporated population. Again, the encyclopedia, if you click on the name of a county or a revenue stream, generally, it's going to filter the other tables or charts on the page, just so you can really quickly bounce through all of the information that's in here. This is kind of one of the areas where we have a really long time series of information. So it, by default, is only going to show you 10 years. But if, we can go all the way back to 1980 and kind of see the really dramatic change in Pinal County's population over that time period and when the, you know, the very substantial growth happened in the mid-2000s. But now we can also see, you know, you're continuing to have large growth in your county's population on an annual basis over the last five to 10 years as well. So, Mr. Chair, there's a lot more information in the encyclopedia that I'm happy to cover if you'd like me to, but I thought I'd give you kind of a flavor of what it can do and see if there are any questions on this section.
Any questions on this section? There's a lot of great information there. We've never had a flat spot in Pinal County, I don't think. It's always continued to grow. Interesting. Okay. You can go forward.
So the last tool I want to highlight for you all is the revenue dashboards. These we originally built for county staff to be able to quickly visualize the shared revenue data that the Department of Revenue and the Department of Transportation publish on a monthly basis. So unlike the profiles in the encyclopedia, this is updated every single month and tries to be as timely as possible. The major caveat here is that we account for the monthly revenue distributions according to how the department codes the data. So it says August in here for the change in revenue or the change fiscal year to date through August. That's all according to how the department accounts for the revenue. Counties can receive it at slightly different times. And so your internal systems may have slightly different numbers than these systems just based on when the money was received by the county. But in general, you're able to go and select any county across the state and get a snapshot of how revenues are performing across the non-property tax general fund revenue stream. So the local sales tax that counties are allowed to levy for general fund purposes, state shared sales taxes, and then general fund vehicle license taxes. These charts on the top give you a snapshot of how the revenues are performing in a single month. So the item I'm hovering over now shows your revenue collections for local excise taxes in August compared to the last several years. Versus this chart at the bottom says, all right, in July and August, right, through the current fiscal year, how much revenue has been collected? And then how does that compare to the same period in previous years? And then the charts for TPT and BLT are much the same. They display the same information just for a different revenue stream. You can also, the dashboard will default to displaying the aggregate county performance. But again, in these filter controls, you're able to go in and select a particular county. The other item I'll highlight here is for really comparison purposes, to see how Pinal's revenues are performing relative to other counties. And so in here, you can see local excise taxes. If we sort this by your performance through the first couple of months of fiscal year 2026, that's Pinal kind of in the middle of the pack in terms of how your revenue has performed compared to prior years. Similarly, in state shared TPT, kind of in the top third of counties. And then vehicle license taxes, which are distributed based on where vehicles are purchased. The county's also seen fiscal year to date collections a little bit stronger than the other counties. We've got some other tables in here that go into even more detail and allow you to look at the performance of particular tax types. We used this a ton during the COVID pandemic to track how different industries were being impacted. So we were able to see restaurant and bar, along with kind of amusement classifications decline as things were shut down during the pandemic. But prime contracting over that time period on a statewide basis and subsequently really took off and grew very dramatically. And so we built this to be able to understand what was driving the growth or decline in county sales tax revenues. And it's been a pretty good tool to be able to do that across the 15 counties. We have a similar dashboard. Excuse me, one sec. Sorry about that. We have a similar dashboard for transportation revenues for the Highway User Revenue or, excuse me, the Highway User Revenue Fund and transportation revenues that are distributed with vehicle license taxes. It's laid out in much the same way and demonstrates the same information. But, Mr. Chair, those are the tools that I wanted to walk you through today. I apologize, I've got a little bit of a cough. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
You're fine. Any questions?
No, very informative. Thank you.
You know, this is a great tool for the staff, you know, the trending and to be able to get a good idea on, you know, where we've been and where we're going, particularly when we're in the budget season. So I think it's a great tool. And I can't thank CSA enough for the time and effort it took to put this all together, so. Supervisor Goodman, you're online. Do you have any questions?
I do not. That was very well informative. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Surti, you good?
Good.
Good. All right. Well, Vanessa, thank you. You have a wonderful day, and we'll see you in Yuma for sure.
That sounds wonderful. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. All right, everyone. No other business before this, Board? We adjourn.